Begin with pledge of allegiance, followed by an invitation by Vice Chairman Jones.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just for all.
Father, we gather today to do our business. If you need guidance and help, give us the wisdom and foresight to do the correct things for all of our Finney County taxpayers. And Lord, we do need some more to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Jeffins. I do not have any chair comments today. We have a large crowd. Appreciate everybody's participation at the local level in their government. We'll move to the consent agenda, and then Commissioner Dries has a motion with regard to the remaining agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Dory, are the minutes as amended?
Yes, sir.
Those two changes, very good. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on the main agenda, I have two items I would like to add. We have had our construction manager at risk meeting with our health department EMS. We'd like to move forward with that discussion and approval of that selection. And then as well, I believe there is a bid or two in from, at least one bid in on the exhibition building project. So I'd like to add those two items at the start of the business meeting for Mr. Pishnes. Might have it be skipping out late in the meeting. That'd give him a chance to have his comments. So therefore, I move the addition of those two items to our agenda.
Second.
And with the consent of the rest, the commission will take those up at nine fifty-five, and then we have a conference call at ten o'clock. Is that right?
Correct.
Any other comment on the additions to the or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we'll add those two items to the agenda. First up on our agenda, before we get to the business items, is public comment. And then, Madam Clerk, we have some folks here for public comment.
Mr. John Coles.
Thank you. I'm representing the Western Kansas Career Showcases. We want to thank you for your membership, but more importantly, we want to thank you for your your trust and your confidence. This is our first year of, even though we've been in existence for six years, our first year being a nonprofit. And we saw a lot of growth. We had seven showcases. We hit over a thousand kids from over forty-some schools. And we had ten to twelve businesses at each showcase. We had three to five colleges at each showcase. We had two showcases here in Garden City. One was our healthcare showcase. The other was our Finney County City-County Essentials showcase, and that was just amazing. And what your city people and county people did to put that together. We had over a hundred and fifty students. Over ninety of them were from Garden City High School that particular day. Our date wasn't the best for that, we found out. So we've already made adjustments for that date for this next year. It was it was just an amazing day. We we're going to have eight showcases this next year. We'll have the two right here in Garden City, the healthcare and the city-county essentials again, but we've also added what we call multi-career showcases where they're not career-specific, where they're more area-specific, and we're gonna, like, one will be in Scott City. We're growing that way. And that. Of those ninety students I talked about at Garden City, we've already got a commitment from Holcomb High School some for next year. Just to kind of quickly explain, schools now have what they call an individual plan of study for every student in their school. Part of that individual plan of study is they have to be exposed to different types of careers. They can have their own little career fair in their school, those kind of things. But what our Western Kansas Career Showcase does now is we'll set that up for the schools. So like Holcomb is going to send every one of their sophomores to at least one or two career showcases for exposure of what we call individual plan of study, which is in every public school district there. We've also seen some growth with other people jumping on. May the fifteenth, we're having a meeting here in Garden where Farm Bureau has a internship program where they will go with any company. And we've asked, we've visited with some of the companies they go with. They'll set up an adult internship program. They will do the paperwork for that company, and what we've heard is really good. So we're having that here. So some of our companies are coming in to explore that. We've worked in with economic development. They have, they're going to have an intern with Lana, an intern get-together where interns will get to know one another in our area. And so we've helped them get some information out to our business people and got some things going that way. You know, it's a little early to talk about success on what we do. People say, well, is it working? I'm a school guy, and a lot of things in school, they call it research-based. I'm kind of one of those that's more experience-based. If it works for one, it makes a difference. So I'm here to tell you, at our healthcare showcase, we had a young man from Deerfield come and got interested in EMT. He comes back to the city-county essentials and got it all lined up. Now he's going to go to Garden City Community College. He's going to come back to Deerfield. He's going to live here. And so that's the power of one. We've got one kid here. And if he gets married and has two kids, all of a sudden, we have four people here. And so that's kind of how we work with things, and we'll grow it one at a time. So we want to thank you and we hope to have continued support from you. We got big plans for the future. We have a lot of people that are very interested in what we're doing. We're sure growing. We're learning. We're one of a kind. So it's a process. It's a journey. So any questions for us?
Questions?
Just, oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead first.
Well, mine are shorter than yours.
You answered the one question, because I was curious. You know, one year, you haven't had time to really track anybody, but you know, that in the future, will I be able, you tracking, or will the school be able to track them?
We're tracking them. We're a partnership with United School Administrators of Kansas. That's the umbrella over the superintendents, the principals, the school boards. They're a member. They helped us get this started. They're going to help do the tracking. We have, every student has signed up. We have that information. And one of the benefits of the companies, and we've seen tremendous results with this, is we cannot give companies students emails, but we can email students companies' information. So what we do is we have an email blast. For instance, like American Implement here, they had some information that they wanted to get out to students. So we were able to email every student that signed up with our showcases this information from American Implement. We've also done that with other companies. So that's our track, going to be our tracking system. So we have a lot of people involved with this now.
I was just simply going to make a comment. I've attended several of the showcases, and I appreciate Joe's energy that he displays when he's with those kids. But I would encourage not only our board and people, and I know some of the county people were at the showcases that we hosted here, obviously, and saw how those worked, but anybody in our audience, whether it's live or online, I would encourage you to go and just observe. It's really interesting and exciting to watch those students as they interact with some businesses, and Joe keeps them moving during the day. So thank you very much for what you're doing, Joe.
I think we had forty-some speakers from the city-county that you guys organized, didn't we? Yeah. And plus, they brought in ambulances. They brought in all kinds of things. Kids went out and got to see part of that. And so we've moved that showcase to April to have a little better weather and get some things like that, because we had it the first part of March, and that's kind of state basketball. So we're learning and growing. Any other question?
Yes, Joe. Last year, this commission supported the showcase project with fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds, I believe. Was that correct? And I believe there are some ARPA funds left. Will you guys be making a request for a similar amount this year?
We would like to do that, yes.
We'll make note of that and make sure that it gets included within our budget projections.
Thank you very much.
Once again, I want to thank you for all the work that you do. This project is, has been funded through funds that were available through the county from the ARPA funds. And this is not a burden on the Finney County homeowner, but rather an investment by this board of available federal funds that were given to us to enhance our community as a result of those federal fundings. And we're going to be able to do it, hopefully, again this year. It sounds to me like we've had great success, and we have to grow our own, and we have to continue to promote and educate from within. Thank you very much for all the work that you do.
Well, thank you. And Garden City, Finney County, we've had great support with membership and that right here. And we're working hard to get more students. And so May twenty-second, we're having all the administrators, school administrators, counselors in to explain more about this. So we'll get students. But we also feel like that individual plan of study will be a real asset of getting more students to what we're doing.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dory, is there any other public comment? All right. Hearing none this morning, then we'll move straight into the business agenda and hear from John Ursick, our fire chief.
Good morning. It's that time of year again. Finney County Resolution Zero Three Twenty Twenty-One specifies that the sale of fireworks is approved from June twenty-seventh through July fifth, eight a.m. to eleven p.m. The resolution also specifies fireworks discharge dates are July first through July fifth, eleven eight to eleven p.m. In twenty twenty-three, GCFD responded to three fireworks-related calls in the county, which is historically in line with prior years. After researching the drought index rating for our region, taking lack of moisture into consideration, and consulting with both Holcomb Fire Chief Razzell and Finney County Emergency Manager Paul Riesley, my recommendation for the twenty twenty fireworks, twenty twenty-four fireworks season is to continue allowing the sale of fireworks in the county, but prohibit discharge of any fireworks outside the respective city limits. Our goal this season is to keep fireworks away from dry land where fire would spread rapidly and still allow citizens to use fireworks if they desire. The Garden City Fire Department spends significant amount of time canvassing fireworks stands, tents, and/or buildings to get the information in the hands of consumers regarding what is allowed to be discharged and authorized dates and times. Additionally, the Garden City Fire Department staff utilizes social media campaigns heavily in an effort to protectively, proactively provide firework education. Additionally, we plan to readdress the Board of County Commissioners in twenty twenty-four, in June twenty twenty-four if we receive moisture. And both Holcomb Fire Chief Razzell and Paul, Emergency Manager Paul Riesling that allow, agree that the allowing discharge of fireworks outside the respective city limits will be safe. Alternatives, sorry. Alternative for you is modify Resolution Three Zero Three Twenty Twenty-One to allow the sale of fireworks in Finney County and ban the discharge of fireworks outside the respective city limits. Second alternative would be to deny the modification of Resolution Zero Three Dash Twenty Twenty-One and provide further guidance. Recommendation from staff would be alternative one.
For the fire chief.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Your resolution, what you're seeking, John, is that there be no fireworks discharged outside of the city limits of Garden City?
Yep, or Holcomb.
Or Holcomb. How about South Winds, because they think they're a city?
They're one of the big concerns, Sage Bros. South Wind, Highland Edition. Without the moisture and the amount of moisture we had in the overgrowth this past year in twenty twenty-three, it's tall. It's, the snow didn't blow it down. The wind didn't blow it down, so it's upright. It's, and some of the fires we're seeing are spreading rapidly throughout the state. So without the moisture, and coming back to you, I think we did this last year, and we wound up with thirty-plus inches of rain. So I'm hoping that this recommendation starts to rain again. So we'll see what happens, but we can evaluate over the next couple of months. Watch the moisture and the drought index.
I understand your intent, and I don't disagree with it. But can we find a place in the city of Garden City or in the city of Holcomb where those folks from South Winds can come and fire their fireworks?
I'm going to do my best to find.
In your driveway.
Well, my point is, where are they supposed to go?
Yeah. So we're going to possibly work with the public works to see what the city owns for property and see what any problems would be using some of the parking lots to allow people to come in and discharge there.
If like, I'm going to throw out a hypothetical, the exhibition building parking lot, if a fire truck were setting there through this fireworks time, that might be helpful, too. Can that happen?
Good, yeah. And we'll be down there for standby for the city fireworks.
Let you guys work it out.
Yeah, we'll get something, and then we'll come back in the June meeting and come up with some options, so.
Anything else, commissioners? Yes, sir.
John, I commend you for your efforts, because if you just drive south of Lakewood, you'll see the damage that the wildfire caused in the sand, and it's tremendous. And with the fuel loads we have, like down in Arken Valley, it's, we get a windy day.
It's scary.
Well, I was just going to say, I think your plan of action is the right one. And I hope people understand, just as Larry mentioned a minute ago, the fuel out there is, we've got some house, housing in our area on the east side of Garden City that is, I mean, it's ready to take off if there's a spark. So but I like the fact that you're willing to come back in June and had significant moisture in the next thirty to forty-five days. We might be able to change that. But I'm just asking all of the residents to be respectful of this limitation.
John, I applaud you for your efforts in reaching out to the other people involved in making this decision, both the county and the city of Holcomb, as well as the city staff and yourself as the fire chief, and encourage that collaboration between the governmental entities to make a good decision for our community. And with that, is there any other discussion and otherwise a motion with regard to the fireworks resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we modify Resolution Zero Three Dash Twenty Twenty-One to allow sale of fireworks in Finney County and ban the discharge of fireworks outside the respective city limits of Holcomb and Garden City.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt alternative number one as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
The natives in South Wind are not going to be happy, but I think they'll understand.
The ones with dogs would be ecstatic.
Yeah.
All right. Next up on the agenda, we have to hear from Skyler Swords with regard to EMS. Please announce yourself for the viewing public.
I'm Skyler Swords, Director of Finney County EMS. I'm here today to seek approval for purchase of a new cardiac monitor. This is a piece of medical equipment that we use for any sort of cardiac arrest or chest pain or anything like that. It's a standard piece of equipment that we have to have on all of our ambulances. We currently have six ambulances. We have five of them have Zolls, and one of them has a different brand called Physio Control. That's aging. It's, that particular one is almost ten years old. And we're in a desire to standardize our equipment so that every truck looks the same. Additionally, it would have the same, the same supplies that we supply for, the same contract that we use for preventative maintenance and repair. And so this, we're looking for approval for forty thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars out of our reserve, equipment reserve fund to purchase this piece of equipment.
Questions from the commissioners? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the request to purchase the equipment, be paid from the equipment reserve without budget impact?
Mr. Chairman, I still move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to make the equipment purchase as requested and to be paid from equipment reserve. Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have an opportunity to take up the issue that was on the agenda with regard to the bid waiver in anticipation of a ten o'clock conference call. Is the bid waiver the ten o'clock conference call, sir?
The bid waiver, are you talking about the acceptance of the bid for the Fairgrounds facility?
Correct.
That is that, it will be on at ten o'clock, correct. He'll be on to call it down.
Okay, so we have an hour before that's to occur.
Correct.
Then we'll continue on down the agenda as published, and we'll hear from Pam Toller, the Director of the Finney County Library.
Good morning. While Pam gets ready here, I just wanted to say a few words. I'm Paula Kierl. I am the Chair of the Board of the Finney County Public Library. Before Pam gets into the budget, I just wanted to say that the library board was very conscientious this year about some of the increases that have had to happen. Our partnership, we noted, with LSNS has allowed the library to keep some of those costs under check. So we didn't have to go up as much as a lot of other public libraries in the state have had to go up. I'll let Pam continue.
All right. Well, please announce yourself and who you are for the viewing public, please.
Pam Toller, Finney County Public Library. I'm the Director. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you and tell you a little bit about our library. I know many of you come in and see us. We enjoy your opportunities to come in and be part of our free programming, all of our free checkouts, all of the different things that we have that you can check out. Just for example, I'll give you some of our library of things. You can check out a hotspot, which is internet you can take home with you. You can check out a cake pan, two hundred and fifty-seven different cake pans that you can have a party with. We have all kinds of stuff. There is a wattage meter that you can check out and use at your own home or business. There are Vox books which read to you. Do you remember the cassette tapes that you put in, and it says, bling, turn the page? We have those, but the cassette tape is now in the book itself. So you just push play on the book, and it reads through it with you. We have playaways. We have all different kinds of things that people are unaware of, including board games now. Not only do we check out video games, we have board games. We have seventy-two different board games that are available for you to take home, try out. If you really like them, you can buy them yourself. And we've been really particular in what we purchase. We don't have Monopoly and Life and Sorry. We get those board games that maybe you can't get here in town. So we try to have things available for you that maybe aren't available anywhere else right now. Lots of programs going on. We have our summer reading program coming up soon. It usually, we have it like this, front and back. It didn't fit this year. We're too busy. So we have a week per page. So there is a calendar for each of you, both our May calendar and our summer reading calendar. Please feel free to ask any questions about those. And we also have a goodie bag for each of you for some of the different things that we have to promote the library.
Well, as Chair, I wanted to express my appreciation for the work that goes into your application. Many of the outside agencies did not tell us much about what they're doing, and your twenty twenty-three statistics were enlightening to me, and I'm going to read them, because I think the public needs to know. The library has ten thousand three hundred and eighty-nine cards, had eighty-nine thousand checkouts, eight thousand public computer uses, fifty-six thousand Wi-Fi sessions, six hundred and forty programs offered, and eighteen thousand program participants. That's a significant community impact of our dollars, public dollars, that we put into a public library. And it's wonderful that if you live in our county, you don't have to pay ninety-four dollars a month or whatever it is to have cable and internet access. You can use the public facility. And I'm hopeful and certain that adequate safeguards are put in place so that children and others and I'm hopeful and certain that adequate safeguards are put in place so that children and others are protected from some of the harsh things that can be viewed on the internet. The special events at the library continue to fascinate me and you should look for this commissioner's support of your budget request. Commissioners? Yes, sir.
Pam, would you take a moment and, and mention a couple or three or four of the other outside agencies or that are affiliated in some way with a program at the library because that's a far-reaching effort too?
Yes, so we do a lot of outreach and partnerships. One, a couple of the partnerships that we really enjoy. We have Garden City Arts comes in each month and puts up a different display. We have Real Men, Real Leaders comes in three or four times a year. They do their hunting, training there through the internet, and then they come and volunteer for us. We work with Harvest America. We work with the Community Service Council. There are so many on our list. Sometimes I have to kind of limit it just to show our board. But we really enjoy working with everyone that we can. Russell Child Development Center, Kansas Children's Service League had started across the street. They were having their playground redone. And so they used our Nature Explorer Center to be able to let the kids be outside during their repairs. So lots of different ways that we are touching many different people.
Other comments? Yes, sir.
Pam, I noticed just scanning back through the walk-ins is gradually increasing. Is this consistent across the state? Other libraries you talked to, because we're still, you know, a hundred and twenty-some thousand back in nineteen versus seventy-some thousand last year or something. So it's increasing, but man, it is a long ways to go.
We're also across the state, across the country, we're seeing a decline in checkouts all over the place just because of the availability of streaming and the availability of audible and book checkouts and things like that. Book purchasing that you can do right from your home, click, 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 done. However, we are combating that. I think we had thirty-six or thirty-seven thousand digital checkouts this year, this last year. So we are working on that. We have two digital platforms. But we are seeing an increase each year of people coming in, of cards coming, you know, coming back. Our cards expire after three years, so you have to come in at least every three years to be counted. And so we, we do see that across the state and across the country, and everyone's working hard to make those numbers come back up. We are seeing a decrease in the number of DVDs that are checked out. It used to be that was one of the biggest checkouts that we had was DVDs. Because of streaming, because of all these things that are available, we're not seeing as much. So we're trying to offer different things that maybe you can't get online.
Is your online service fast enough for you? Is it?
Yes, we, we have had really good luck with both Hoopla and Cloud Library. Hoopla has movies, music, TV, ebooks, e-audio books, comic books, binge passes, magazines, all different kinds of things. And then Cloud Library has ebooks, e-audio books and magazines as well. Many magazines aren't being done in print anymore, so this is the way to get one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you're complete.
Two, two things. It appears, it sounds like our relationship with our management firm, LSNS or whatever.
Library Systems and Services. Yes, sir.
That that relationship is going okay and, and that we're still finding that that's a better way. And I'm, I'm saying this for the, for the viewing public, if you're live or online, because we're using an outside management firm rather than doing it ourselves. And we've done that for, I don't know how many years now, but for quite a number of years. So that relationship is still a good one for the library?
Yes, I have been with the library since two thousand and ten and, or two thousand and fourteen, excuse me, for ten years. And I have seen enormous support from them. I do not have to come to you guys and say, what do I do about a book ban request? What do I do about this? I can go to them and they have that expertise that maybe I don't have or that nobody here in town may have. So I get so much support from them in ways that I would struggle here. I know Dodge City has had, they're looking for their fifth director in six years. And from what I've heard, that support behind the director is a problem that they're having. We don't have that problem. I have amazing support in every asset, aspect of our workings.
And from a board perspective, I assume you're seeing that same thing?
Yes, as a board, they are there to answer any questions and kind of help us decide where to go and what to vote on. They also help, I mean, with bulk discounts with Hoopla, Cloud Library. We can get those at a cheaper rate than any of the other libraries around here because of their buying power.
Well, part B to that, before I go on to my next question is, has Ellis County reached out to you? Because Ellis County is going through a process right now of forming a county library. And they're having the discussion about in-house versus outside management. I just wondered if they'd reached out to you.
They have not reached out to me, but I'd be happy to speak with them and get them in touch with people that are available.
And then my other question is, one of your comments here is that with regard to the library cards and the residents of Kearney, Wichita, Scott Lane, Ness, Hodgman, Gray, Haskell and Grant Counties are eligible for those cards. My question is this. We tout ourselves as one of the largest libraries in southwest Kansas and so forth. Do these others have libraries, but they just don't have as many things available? Or tell me what the relationship is. And then part B to that is, do we get quite a bit of participation from these other counties, these outlying counties? Because I think it's a great thing for us to be able to offer that service.
Yeah, I'd love to be able to show you. We have an analytics thing that shows us where our cards are. So we can show you where they are in different counties. If you're ever interested, stop on by. I'll pull that up for you. But a lot of the counties do. Scott County, Sablet has one, Cimarron has one. But they are, I know Sablet is about a quarter of this room, size-wise. They do some programming, yes, and they do a fantastic job at it. They just don't have the space and staffing and funds to help provide everything that we can. So we are so pleased that that is something that you guys have approved that we can continue to do is offer free cards to all adjacent counties.
That's great. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go left to right. Commissioner Driz?
My comments, Pam, are on your printed budget presentation here. I commend you. You've listed out the other revenues that are available. Commend you with other expenditures available that you spent. It's pretty detailed and I appreciate that very much. I'll make a note that your budget request is basically the two and a half percent increase in the charges from LSNS. Is that?
That is correct.
Very, very close. Well, well-presented budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Two quick points because we're running out of time, I'm sure, but on the twentieth of this month, I believe, is when Todd will be here. So the LSNS staff from corporate headquarters, if you will, the head, the head gentleman will be here, is it?
He will be here in June. Sue and Mallory will be here in.
Okay, but, but they do make, make house calls, if you will. Secondly, I'd like to point out that, I don't want all the noise, it's hard to compete. The Nature's Explorer, the outdoor classroom, is not part of our LSNS agreement. So part of her budget is taking care of that outside of that contract. That was, that was billed as a community idea and so, anyway, great job. And when it's time, I'd be happy to offer a motion.
The purpose of the hearings is to take the budget requests under advisement. And we'll handle the budget request as part of all of the budgeting when we get to that in June, I believe. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's the recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Motion, take the budget under advisement.
All right.
Second?
Moved and seconded to take the budget request from Fannie County Public Library under advisement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll hear from the budget requests for the Committee on Aging. Please announce yourself for the viewing public and the rest of the committee.
Good morning. I am Patty Thummel. I am the Executive Director for Fannie County Committee on Aging, which includes the Senior Center and the Fannie County Transit.
Please proceed.
All right. I thank you for letting me speak this morning. We have a unique problem this year and it stems back to the pandemic of twenty-twenty. We are still waiting for the buses that we have been approved for by the KDOT grants. And we have not received any of them. So one thing, our buses are getting a lot of use, a lot more than they ever have, and a lot of miles on them. So we're just kind of babying them along. But what this means for us is in what we had originally projected in twenty-twenty for the cost of our buses has changed. One of the buses we will, we are waiting to receive will be put onto the Fannie County Mini Bus Service. The price and taxes have gone up since twenty-twenty. So we are asking for forty thousand dollars more than we did last year just due to this unexpected expense that we are projecting. KDOT pays seventy percent of our buses that we order from our grant and reimbursement, different things like that. And we have to pay thirty percent plus the taxes on these new buses. So with that thirty percent and our projected taxes will still be a little short. So I kind of wanted to let you know what our mini bus does for Fannie County and the elderly and disabled residents to ride the senior bus. Now that is different than our city transit that has the bus stops in the set routes. Mini Bus Service goes to the doors by appointment. And we, anybody that is eligible due to old age or disabilities and has a doctor's order for this, we can go to their homes, pick them up. We have lifts if they're not able to make it up the steps. We take them to wherever they're needing to go, whether it is just appointments, shopping, errands, or activities or lunch at the senior center. And then when they are ready to be picked up, either somebody at their appointments or like at the senior center or a lot of them have their cell phones, will call us and we'll go pick them up and get them back home and make sure they make it back inside. I wanted to tell you a little story about a new client we've had. She, or this person has very limited eyesight. She was always having to wait on her spouse or family or friends to take them to where they needed to go. So she decided to try our mini bus service. And she, it was a learning experience for them, but they have bloomed with pride being able to get out on their own, to go when they want to go and not to feel that burdened, burdened to their family and friends or neighbors. She's built up her self-esteem and her self-worth. And as I think about it, when I have to have my car in the shop and I have to rely on people to get me to, you know, take me to work or whatever, it's a, it's not a good feeling. So we are so happy to provide this service for this person and anybody in Fannie County that need a little bit extra help. Our bus drivers are very sincere, helpful, and they go above and beyond at all times. This year, we did change some of our accounts into a different bank. So we have got a year's worth of guaranteed interest. And so with that interest, we replaced a fifty-plus-year furnace that had not worked for many years. And it had left about a third of our building without heat, mostly several of our offices and the west side of our buildings. So we was able to take that and go ahead and get that replaced and then also put a split unit in our kitchen. So now we have air conditioning and heating for just the kitchen. So we are still planning to update our building. We're just kind of having to take a different trail to do it. We're doing fundraisers and we'll use the interest earns to replace some of these fifty-plus-years furnaces that we didn't know was quite that old. And some of our plumbing. So like always, we work hard to be good stewards of the funds that we get from you guys and we appreciate everything you do for us. Any questions?
Commissioners, we'll go left to right this time.
I have no questions. Thank you, Patty.
Under capital outlay of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand, those are the buses? Is that the number for the buses?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And your billing, billing capital outlays, that's not presented, but it's on your ones?
Yes, and, well, yes, it is presented on our, our budget. I was trying to get the one I had on my notes written on. So our mini buses are the, are the requested, requested buses are the four hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three. That, you can see what has been projected is up forty thousand. So, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patty, you, you said you're going down a little different trail with regard to the building and, and we've talked in previous months over the last couple of years with regard to the condition of the building. Can you help us understand that just a little bit better, what that, I mean, you men, you mentioned fundraising and so forth.
Right. Since you guys don't, don't own the building, we've kind of backpedaled in, in trying to come up, come up with funds on our own. And so we've opened a small thrift shop inside of the senior center. It is all donated items, so it's a hundred percent money is made for the remodel. We've been having a lot of different bake sales, different things like that. We are getting ready to get with Bruce, the architect, and find out which each room will cost to do what we want to do with it. We want to put in a coffee shop. We're trying to find out and do new activities to bring in the people that are fifty and forty now when they retire. And what people like now are coffee shops, just different exercise programs, different things like that. But some of the old stuff that we do, the card playing, the dances, the pool playing, different things like that, they're not popular with our younger seniors. So as we evolve with this remodel, we will try and incorporate the things that are eye-opening for these younger, you know, projected seniors for the, you know, several years, you know, to come. So when we do that, we get with Bruce and we find out what each, each room is going to cost to do what we want to do. Then we can do some major fundraising with, would you like to adopt a room? You can name it what you want to, you can, and we'll put your name by the door. You can name it what you want to, you can, and we'll put your name by the door, whatever, you know. And so we'll do some major fundraising as we get more of our figures fit together by Bruce.
Oh, just to further clarify, but I think I understand what you're saying. The, the, because there was talk at one time, do we stay in this building or don't we stay in this building? But it, it sounds like the decision has been made to stay in the building.
Yes.
Do these different things, do the fundraising.
And we'll just slowly replace things as we can. We did have a, a refleek earlier this year, and the couple of the guys from our Board of Directors got up there, and they sealed it really well. We were not able to get any monies from the insurance company because it was just due to age. So as that progresses and we have a little bit of trouble, we do have a plan in place of what we want to do. So I, you know, we got those plans, and it's just going to be, just to be very careful with our funding and just go forward a little at a time.
All right. Thank you for that, Claire. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. My notes, once again, really appreciate you filling out the paperwork to tell us what you have done. And for the public's benefit, 12,210 rides to Finy County seniors, 55,692 public riders, 25,023 meals on wheels, 6,000, 9,697 free or reduced meals on wheels, and 14,935 meals served at the Senior Center to our seniors and others who are participating in these programs. Volunteers, along with RSVP, prepared 1,382 federal and state tax returns, bagged 20,854 bags of, of meals for the YMCA Summer Meal Program. Continuing to work on the Senior Center building improvements. I just can't tell you enough how much we appreciate all the work that you do for the public welfare, not only for seniors, but for all of Garden City and Finy County.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? All right. Commissioner Jones.
No question.
Motion.
You want a motion? I'll offer the motion to take the Senior Center's budget request under advisement.
Second.
Moved and seconded to take this budget request under advisement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from the Spirit of the Plains. Good morning. Please announce yourself for the viewing public.
Debbie Reynolds, Executive Director of Spirit of the Plains CASA. And I've got something to pass out here. Here's our, here's our annual report from 2023. I thought it'd be kind of quick and easy to go through, kind of like what we've done in the last year since we've met. Our impact of how many children we served in Finy County, actually, in the 25th judicial, we served 123 children. But 115 of those children came from Finy County. And we had 20 volunteers. 16 of those volunteers are Finy County citizens, and four of them are from Scott County. Our advocates drove 9,292 miles last year, and those are unreimbursed. That's their, their contribution to their volunteer position. We had one advocate who drove almost 2,000 miles, and that's Deanna Berry. Deanna was the Executive Director of Russell Childhood, and she drove over 2,000 miles last year. Our volunteer hours last year was 1,576 hours, and we had 3,027 volunteer advocate contacts. And contact is seeing the child, seeing the parents, seeing a teacher, a counselor, you know, anybody who is a part of the child's case. It's actually a stakeholder of the child's case. We participated in 234 hearings last year. And it's some good news here. The average length of case went down from last year. Last year, it was 24 months. This year, in 2023, it was 20.6 months average of a child from opening to, to the closing, whether it be reintegration or adoption. And I put on the last page, or the second to the last page, is CASA cravings. We have a brand-new fundraiser that we did this year, but we were all in the planning stages of last year. And CASA cravings was a first-time event for us that we did to raise funds. We met our goal. And the coolest thing about it is that a person in the community could buy a lunch for a first responder. We sold, oh, 217 lunches, but over 70 of those were first responders. So we had to negotiate with Courtney and with all the county, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, and the Fire Department. We had to share all those meals with. We're hoping next year that we'll serve a meal for every first responder in this fundraising event. And on the back page is all our community partners. Our community partner, we just had our appreciation luncheon this past Saturday. And this year's community partner is Reeves Cattle Country, Cattle Company. And they have been partners since 2010, loyal, faithful donors to our mission. And we recognize them and their loyal donorship to us. In 2023, we had a really good fiscal year, as you can see on my budget. A couple of things I want to talk about with that budget is that we usually get $30,000 from Fennup Foundation. And this past Christmas, Cavalier Hart called me up and says, would you like a Christmas gift? I'm like, well, sure. And she says, we'd like to give your, your, your grant early this year and give it to you in December. So we're going to grant you $30,000 without you writing a grant. Well, that was a great Christmas gift, let me tell you, not having to write a grant for it. But another, another reason that we really have a really good year was I wrote a grant for a software, donor-based software. We've never had one. We were running all our donations off of multiple spreadsheets. So there's a company called Network for Good, Jump Start. And here, the Western Kansas Community Foundation and the Fennup Foundation, they get three grants to nonprofits to actually receive the software, but also coaching for a year. We saw the windfall of that grant at match day. We went from $36,000 to $50,000 on match day. It's just a beautiful piece of software that will track all donors. It will also do spreadsheets of who's donating and who's not, and who do you want to send a newsletter to? You can actually do newsletters as well. And we ran our entire event, CASA cravings, off of that piece of software as well. And so that was really a blessing to receive that grant. As you, many have known that we received the award for the 2023 Nonprofit of the Year, which was such an honor and a privilege to receive, that we're celebrating our 39th year in Finy County. And we walk on the backs of so many people who've not only been in my position, but all the advocates and the staff and the board members. I want to share a story. I've got, I could bore you with a lot of stories. Well, not bore you, but I wanted to share you a story that, you know, in our business, very often, we do not see the fruition of our labor. A child goes through the system, we close a case, we move on, and they move on. We had a young woman come to me last summer and says, me and my fellow students would like to do a garage sale. I'm like, okay. And we'd like to do all baby clothes and baby furniture. I'm like, sure, you could do it right out here in the parking lot. And so they did one, and they raised about $600. And I asked her when she came and brought the money. I said, well, why'd you choose CASA? Because, you know, there's a lot of worthy nonprofits that could have used this money, but just curious. She goes, I was a CASA child. Oh. And she told me her story. And she says, I'm graduating with my second degree. I'm a respiratory therapist. I said, oh, you are. We, we hear these stories of how CASA makes such an impact on a child, but we, very rarely do we actually meet that child. And just this past Saturday, she was our keynote speaker at our appreciation luncheon. And she announced to us that she had applied for med school and was accepted in the nurse practitioner program. She is the reason that CASA is in our community because she tells us, and a lot of people tell us, that we're the most consistent person in that child's life. She said she was in this system. She was 15 years old. She was removed. She had eight different case teams before she aged out. Eight different case managers, such and such. One consistent CASA was with her the whole time. And she said, the CASA stood up in court and gave me a voice that I'd never had my entire life, and that's why I'm here today. CASAs do that. They stay with the child from the beginning to the end of the case, and they do make a difference in the child's life. It's Brianna Perez. She's, she's here in our community. She's a respiratory therapist, and, and I'm sure there's many Briannas that we don't know about. Any questions?
Commissioners, we'll go right to left this time. Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, we thank you so much. Are your volunteer levels, are they increasing? Or are you still always looking for volunteers?
It's one step forward, two step back. You know, we just recruited two from CASA cravings, and one happens to be a firefighter. Read our booklet in the lunch and called us up, I want to do this, you know? And so it's, people's lives change. They have babies, or they move, or, you know, sometimes people who've, we have CASAs that have been there 16, 18 years. But we have some CASAs who get trained, and they take the first case, and they said, it's too hard, I can't do it. So we usually stay around 20 to 26. I mean, I would say it fluctuates, you know? Right now, we're at 23, you know, in 2024. But it's still hard. It's a big commitment. It's, for a volunteer position, it's a big commitment.
Commissioner, please do you?
Well, just to follow up on that, Ms. Chairman, because on one of your pages, you say you're, you're hoping to train and certify 12 additional, and you mentioned the two community members, and now one even after, or one or two after Saturday. But when you talk about the training and the certification, help me in, and you've probably said this in previous years when you've been here in front of us, but help me understand a little bit of what kind of training and certification are these volunteers asked to go through? I assume some of it's background and so forth, too, so.
It's very stringent. And to be honest, we just had a class, and three students, two of them did not pass the background check. And, you know, I appreciate that about Officer Judicial Administration, that they are that stringent. So sometimes they start a class, and then we'll get something back that says they can't finish the class. But the, the actual classroom is 30 hours, and there's court observation. And then they also do things of, like going out to a house visit and things like that. Once they're certified, they actually are paired with a supervisor, and so the supervisor works that case right along with them. So we just don't throw them out in the deep water, you know, of the pool. But then we, during that 30 hours, there's also subject matter experts from our community to come in and talk about domestic violence, or substance abuse, or, you know, just different variety of folks come in and talk to the class. So it's, it's a big commitment.
A lot of it's about identification of, of issues and so forth within the home or within the, the family. Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
It's that, plus it's also lots of case studies of working through a case, like what would you do in this situation? And giving people the tools of how trauma impacts decisions and generational trauma. And, you know, we touch about a variety of subjects, but also they have to remain certified. They have to take 12 CEUs each year, so to remain certified.
I don't know if I knew that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, thank you, and, and it is important work. I wish we didn't have to have this kind of a service in our society, but we do, and CASA's doing a great job. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Reynolds, your statistical information I wanted to take note of and make sure the county counselor took note of. You reported 137 SNC cases in 2023.
Mm-hmm.
Those are Finy County cases, or is that total?
That's Finy County cases.
We want to know about that.
Yeah.
Because I've asked the county attorney for an update on the number of cases that's, of that are indigent panel handles every year. So it's reported that we had 137. Commissioner Dries.
First off, I commend you on your budget, very detailed. Appreciate that. For the public's, I, I, we, I think everybody in this room probably knows what CASA does. Can you explain the difference between the federally funded Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center versus what you do for the children?
Their, their focus is for sexual abuse children. We're not subject matters experts on that, so we work along with them. And so they also have counselors. We don't have trained counselors in our, on our staff. But if there's a sexual abuse case that comes in, generally, they're involved with CAC.
That's not, I don't want to delete what you guys, the children, at all.
Yeah.
They, fantastic.
And, and a lot of cases, they're not involved in our cases, you know? They, just because the nature of the actual case. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, your county counselor wants to say something.
Not until you're done.
I have nothing.
Madam?
I just wanted to note that CASA isn't necessarily involved in every case that's filed from the county attorney's office or every SNC case. They are limited by the number of advocates that they have. So that number tells you how many that CASA was actually involved in, not the total number of cases that were filed. I have not got those updated numbers from our county attorney's office, though.
I am advised they're forthcoming. Sorry for taking.
I would like to make a statement that there is concern from CASA about the state's position on SNC cases. We're seeing a lot of cases that come in that are not assigned to us or not, actually, the kids are not removed from home. The state has an, has an agenda to lessen the number of children in foster homes. I get that. We have a lot. We have over 8,000. But I don't want us to get into a position where we're doing this for the sake of data and not looking at the safety of the children. We're really very leery of some of the decisions that's being made because of that initiative to lessen the number of kids in foster care. Surely, there's a lot of initiatives to keep kids in, in the home and receive services in the home. We won't know, you know, probably for a year or two, or maybe even longer, the impact of this initiative because just by, we'll see repeats. You know, we'll see, like, they tried something, and they'll actually be back in court. So, and the scary part of that is that during that whole time of the state trying to keep the family together, kids are being traumatized over and over and over. And so it is, it is a very big concern for us.
As I understand it, Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Schartz will also correct me. Any of the parties can request the appointment of a CASA or the court on its own motion. So the appointment of a CASA is left to the parties of the court, not just the county attorney.
That's correct. I know that there were times, and I think that's where it's really important for, to have those advocates trained and go through, because sometimes it was, there were, the request was made for a CASA to be put into a case, and we just didn't have enough available because they are, each one of those volunteers is limited by the number of cases that they can get involved in, as well as the number of kids. So some of those cases where you have five or six kids runs into issues as well.
In conclusion, we note that you have made a request for 15,000 from the commission. And Commissioner Jones does a motion?
Okay, I have a motion to approve their request for consideration.
To table it, sir, or to approve it?
No, do.
Under advisement. Take it under advisement.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded, taken under advisement. Any other discussion, hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do, Deb.
We can get one more done before we do a break, and we'll take up the 2025 budget request of the Finy County Fair Board, Roxanne Lancing, and Carol Fry. Is Carol with you today?
Carol is not here, no.
Well, Roxanne, good morning, and please announce yourself and your position with the fair.
I am Roxanne Lancing from the Finy County Fair Board. I am the vice chair. As you'll see, we requested $53,000. The fair has The fair has held its request steady for the last decade, and as you'll see, moving into the next year, we will probably be asking you to move that forward in the next year. This year, we have, as you saw last year, we started with a celebratory concert at the beginning of the week. We'll be doing that again this year with the Josh Abbott concert. So I think you're going to see, the fair is changing dramatically. This has become a week of entertainment and showcasing what we have to do in Fannie County. Like I said, we start out with the Josh Abbott concert. Obviously, we're still doing all of the 4H and FFA events, the kids showcasing their work throughout the year and raising their livestock. So we're really excited. The fair has moved from about four, five board members to roughly 15 of us. There's a lot of work going on to make this the largest, best fair in the Western Kansas side of the state. So we're excited about where we're going. I think you're going to see a lot, a lot of changes coming up this year. And I would stand for any questions. We're to come behind some of these people, like Debbie and her group, this kind of is, we are very valuable in the aspect of the fact that, yes, this does bring economic impact into the community, and yes, we are working with those youth to keep them on the straight and narrow, and I would say 4H and FFA is one of those programs that does that very well, and the fair is a good assistance program to that.
Well, I want to grant your request that's in writing at $5,300.
Yes, I saw that. My apologies, but I'm requesting $53,000, gentlemen.
Darn.
Yeah, there is a discrepancy between the cover page and the spreadsheet.
All right, duly noted. Questions for the vice chairman? Yes, sir.
The vice chairman?
She is.
I am the vice.
Vice chairman.
Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Fire away.
Tell us a little bit, if you can, about what's new and different this next upcoming fair from the last one. You, in terms of, of events, you had Antique Tractor Pool and...
Mm-hmm. Every year, we've tried to add one new event, trying to move backwards so that you have a full week of community events going on. We started with Antique Tractor Pool. Last year, we added in the community concert to kick off the week, and this year, we're adding in a day of KPRA rodeo. So that with some smaller events, and as you know, community, the carnivals are really hard to get, so we decided we were going to do community carnival. So we are expanding that community carnival this year to have bigger, larger games, and so that will, that's another thing we're adding in addition, too.
The community carnival last year was inside the exhibition building mostly, was it not?
Yes, and it will continue to be, yes.
I attended that, and I was very impressed. The kids got deeply involved.
Yes, they did, and it's cost effective. It's a dollar a ticket. I mean, you come there with $5, and you spend the afternoon having some fun.
Roxanne, I have a what-if question. Some years ago, this commission, with the Scott County Commission endorsed a proposal, a resolution to create a district, if you will, for extension services.
Mm-hmm.
Scott and Fannie County, has there ever been any talk, any consideration about, could the two counties go together and put on a fair?
Hmm, there has not been any talk of that, no.
Bad idea?
Um, I have no comment.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as lays onto the extension board, and I've missed the last couple of meetings because of conflicts, but no, there's not any talk about that, and even when the district was formed, it was very clear that each county, whether it be our two county district, or there's a couple of districts in the state, or five counties, that they would have the opportunity to keep their own county fairs, but what the extension district provided was expertise with regard to the different services that those extension different districts provide. So I don't know that there ever will be. I, I talk about that unless one of the counties said, "Hey, we're having trouble," and they come to the other county and ask for that. But within the extension districts, that's not been a part of the conversation.
I bring that up because if you go back in history, the Fannie County Fair Board was to be made up of a representative from each township. That has not been the case for years, and they've, several times, have had difficulty even having a fair board.
Yes, and, and that has been one of the things that we've worked diligently on. Like I said, at one point in time, I know we were down to probably five members. We are at that 15 mark. A full board would be 21 folks, so we are not, we are six members away from that, so really, we've come quite a ways. I would say that there is very good representation from across our county.
Okay. Any other questions?
Comment, if you would.
You got your timer on?
Uh, the timer's on. She's got 10 minutes to go. So as you're laying on, I want to expand a little bit on what Roxanne was talking about. You know, in my generation, the fair was 4H and the carnival, and these guys are taking it another step. Yes, the 4H is a major part of the fair, but they're trying to make it more of a community thing by bringing in concerts.
More of a showcase of the entire, right.
Contest, you can name it, and they're trying to broaden it from just being a 4H showcase to involve a lot more aspects of the community, and I commend them for that. There was just five members on that board when I started my activity with them, and it is exciting to watch the input and the enthusiasm a lot of these fair members have.
They're a very passionate group.
Very, very, to their, to their credit, and I appreciate what they've done.
These people work very hard, and I, I want to commend them, because they are all volunteers. 15 of these people take vacation time to work the fair, so it's not an easy task. This is a very hardworking board. I mean, these people are out putting up pins, these people are fixing, I don't know much about it, they're out working the dirt and that kind of stuff. These people put in a lot. This is probably one of the hardest working volunteer boards that I've ever been on, and all of these people are very, very passionate about what they do. They, they definitely deserve a round of applause. They've worked very hard.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just please give us the dates for the fair this...
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask. It is the last full week of July.
Okay, last full week of July.
My apologies, I have 70 events right now we're working on, so my apologies for not having exact dates.
Yeah, and we have people online, and I just think it's good to get the word out.
And go to visit gck.com. Everything you ever want to know about Fannie County's goings-ons is there, so shameless plug.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to beat Commissioner Jones to the motion and move that we take the fair board budget under advisement.
And I would second that.
Moved in second to take the fair board's budget request under advisement, hearing no other comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll let you know. Thank you. And we're going to take a pause at this point in time. I'm going to ask, Mr. Dries, can you get the construction manager at risk done in the next 15 minutes, as we have a 10 o'clock Zoom meeting scheduled with the other folks? If it's going to take more than 15, then we'll take a break.
Should not.
All right, well, we'll move then to the amended item on the agenda, the CMR EMS County Health Building contract. Commissioner Dries, this is your chair of that committee. What can you do for us today?
All right, on the first May and April 30th, we spent two days interviewing three firms for a construction manager at risk on this project. Very good discussion from all three contractors, all three capable buildings. We're very impressed all the way across. It turned down to a few major items in a seven or eight-point presentation that we had to weigh. There's a statute involved with this that I wasn't aware of because of the way we're funding this. Mr. Administrator, would you kind of explain this statute just a little bit?
As you recall, the, the commission authorized going through this process, construction manager at risk, and when you did that, there's certain steps that you have to follow within the statutes, one of them being that those seven members that was, that is on this committee had to score all the candidates, all the applicants there, if you will, and, and then, based upon the statute, then you would enter into negotiation for the one with the highest score, if you will, and we did have a higher score. It was extreme, as Commissioner Dries has pointed out, extremely difficult coming up with ultimately that, that, that individual, because they all had some very good attributes, and they brought different skills and so forth to the project. So with that, Commissioner Dries, I think you have the results there that...
I do, I do. I will point out that we had, did have, the three, the three contractors who bid the project was Dick Construction, Hutton, and Crossland. And again, it was very, very good, and I will point out that I do know that it, just to apply for something like this, between the cost of these booklets they send out, it's probably a $5,000 to $10,000 expense upfront, whether they get the project or not. So it is a commitment on the, all three of these contractors. The score was very close, but it turned out that Hutton, according to the prescribed score sheet that we had to use, is the one we need to award that contract to. Very appreciate the other two construction companies, and again, all, the presentations were great, very, very organized, very good presentations. There's no doubt in any of our minds that any of the contractors would have built a fantastic building for us, but doing the score sheet that we required to, and the way we graded each area, Hutton came out on top. It was very close all the way through. So what I would like the commission to consider is to move forward with this project, granting administration the chance to start the work with Hutton on this written agreement between the two county and the Hutton Corporation on starting this project, and to get it moving down the road, it's, time is of essence, I think, a little bit. I would move that we approve this county administrator to start those negotiations with Hutton on a contract for the EMS Health Department Building.
Second.
Can we clarify that motion, please?
All right, I believe the motion is, is to empower the administrator to negotiate a construction manager at risk agreement on the EMS County Health Building at Eighth and Mary.
That's what I said.
With Hutton. And that is your second, sir?
Yes, sir.
You're pretty articulate.
It's just Hutton, is it?
I was, I'm proud.
Corpora, it, it's Hutton Corporation, not construction.
Thank you.
Too many attorneys up here.
Well, one doesn't have a license.
But I'm related to one, so.
Okay, discussion, I'm going to start with it, and Commissioner Dries, is there any difference in price between these three managers?
Yes, sir. That was the main difference. When it really came down to it, is the difference between Hutton and Crossland, there was a, well, it wound up considerable difference. Hutton beat all three, the three contractors, construction companies. Hutton was by far the most economical to the county. I think that was basically the main difference in the, in the scoring.
Well, my concern is, is that Dick Construction, Gary Dick occupied this chairman's chair for this county for a long time. When I go out and see activities in the community, I see Dick Construction shirts. I also see Hutton, so I appreciate their involvement in our community. But as someone who's lived here for 40 years, Hutton's a new person in the community, so to speak, and I'm hopeful that your committee, in making this recommendation, took those local contacts into consideration.
We, we did. We totally realized that with Dick Construction, that money would stay completely in the community, and we, we do recognize that.
All right. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, as one who sat in on that discussion for several different meetings and the interview process the other day, another factor was the insurance rating factor that we took into consideration with all three of these. And then secondly, the other piece is that local contractors will be permitted to bid on these projects, and there was a commitment from all three of these candidates to use as much local as possible. There might be, I'll just pull out, and I don't think it was said this way in the interviews, but there might be a bricklayer issue. We might not be able to find somebody local because of timing or availability of people. So there'll be some of those where there'll be out-of-town contractors, but there was that commitment. And then lastly, with regard to Hutton and Crossland, there was definitely a backup system with those organizations that Gary Dick, and I, I like Gary a lot, good, good friend of mine, does a lot of great work in the community, and, and we talked about how he sat in our chair, one of our chairs, years ago, so we know that commitment, but there was a, also a backup component, if, if they can't find local contractors and so forth.
And lastly, the time, estimated time of the completion of the project did favor the larger companies.
Right.
Any other discussion, sir?
I had the privilege of serving on the board of county commissioners when the Community Corrections Building was built by construction management by Andy and Hutton Construction, and it was a, was a very worthwhile experience. I was more than impressed, so I, I concur with, with the motion.
Anything else? All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. We are ready to undertake a Zoom meeting at 10 o'clock, and we're going to take a break right now, and we'll reconvene at 10 o'clock sharp. I show it at 9:53, although our clock in the room is still stuck at 8:32.
Yeah, we're not...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Administrator, you have the floor?
Very good, all right. Do we have, who do we have online? Garrett?
Yeah, this is Garrett Gorman with the Rossumon School in New York, Manhattan.
All right, very good. Good morning.
Morning.
Do you have an opportunity to share the schematic of the project with the commission from your end?
Just wanted to review this.
Yes.
Yeah, can I share my screen?
Yes. Well, he's, well, he's bringing that up. Just in summary, this is a project out at the Fairgrounds' main facility, and it's to upgrade the electrical service and IT service out there at the Fairgrounds. What he's done is pulled up a schematic of that, but we went out for proposals for this project. Keeping in, just as a refresher, this project is, will partially be funded through KDHE grant through the Health Department of approximately $100,000 for the project. And we opened up bids, or bid, Friday, and I'll let Garrett go ahead and take it from there. He can go through the scope of the project, if you don't mind, Garrett.
Yeah, no problem at all. So, the scope of the project, if you can see my screen, is to cut a concrete floor at these locations. This shows an outline of that. We're going to add a panel board, we're going to switch drawings. Panel G at this location to feed new branch circuits in boxes on the floor at these locations. We also have communications conduits routed concealed on the floor in the same trench as the power. And it all comes up at this location. Friday was bid, we received one bid, and then I don't know if you guys are ready to review that piece. Yeah. Davis gave us a bid of $149,681. It was the one bid.
And, Mr. Administrator, if I understood, the urgency of getting this on the agenda today was because we have a limited timeline in order to utilize the grant funds to fund this project?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We do have a limited amount of time. We have to have those monies spent and paid out, I believe it's July 31st of this year. And we have limited gaps within the events in that facility to get them in there to get working on this. So that was a reason for expediting this and adding this to the, to the board's agenda this morning.
Right, and the proposed cost?
Proposed cost is the $149,682, 100,000 of that coming from the KDHE grant, and the other $49,6, written down, $618, let me confirm that.
Yeah, $149,618.
Will come from the Fairgrounds' CIP fund.
So we don't have an additional budget item, the $49,618 comes from reserve funds, 100,000 from the grant.
That is correct.
Commissioners have any questions of the electrical engineer or the scope of the work?
My question, Mr. Chairman, is just simply length of time for the project. And you mentioned between events and things like that, but we're cutting holes into the floor and all that, and I assume filling back in with concrete and curing and all that sort of thing.
Yes, and that was all within the request for proposal, so they are fully aware of all the constraints on this project.
And it's going to fit within that, those openings that we have and before July 31st?
Correct, that is, that is our understanding, yes.
If you would, scroll down the contract, Mr. Engineer, until you get to the bottom. I need to make sure the commissioners know who's signing this contract, so the motion can be properly done. So if you would... Okay, you don't have signature line for us?
This is a benefit form, we will produce a contract.
All right. Okay.
Yes, and...
And then we'd get the contract and review it.
Yes, and in essence, I think the, for your consideration for the motion, might be to accept Davis Electric bid and to enter into a contract and authorize the county administrator to sign that contract, subject to county councilor's review and approval.
Right, and is there any policy that we need to weigh with regard to acceptance of this bid?
You've gone, you've waived that notice policy already on the RFP, if you remember correctly.
Very good. You know, when you go fishing, sometimes memory doesn't serve you very well. Lose a lot of recall when the sun bears on you that much, although it rained seven out of the 11 days.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think the administrator worded that. Did you capture those words, Madam Clerk? And so I would so move for the amount of $149,681.
Is there a second?
No, second.
And moved and segmented to accept the bid, authorize the administrator to negotiate and sign a contract, subject to county councilor's review and approval. If I've got it all correctly, Dory, I'll move on to vote. I do, very good. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I need to note that I abstain, conflict of interest.
Thank you.
The other Jones. I made, I made the motion.
Motion, second.
She's got it.
All right, anything else for the engineer? Can we terminate the Zoom meeting?
Thank you, Garrett, appreciate it. And you'll get us an agreement going?
That's correct. We will issue a notice to see the contractor and get a contract for both sides to review and sign.
All righty.
Thank you for your participation today and allowing us to get this done by Zoom and also on an expedited manner. Appreciate it. Going back to our agenda, now that we have handled the construction manager at risk, we have handled the bid, acceptance of the bid, we had previously waived the policy procedure when we did the RFP, as noted by the administrator, so that puts us back on the agenda and back to Roxanne with the Fannie County CVB outside agency request. Please announce again for the viewing public.
Roxanne Lansing, back as Fannie County CVB Director. Ta-da, another hat. So the Fannie County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and for you who have been on the board for quite some time, get to hear this every year, but for the viewing public, again, a review of how we're funded. The Fannie County Convention and Visitors Bureau, true investors in Fannie County, I say that with the explanation of how we receive our funding dollars. The CVB is funded 100% by the transient tax. This is a 6% tax charged on each hotel stay, meaning that all dollars received, our outside money is coming in from overnight stays to this community. This means we cost the local taxpayer absolutely zero tax dollars unless they are utilizing a lodging facility. Therefore, the benefit we bring to Fannie County is 100% investment, creating economic value through the promotion of the leisure and hospitality dollar. However, that's not the end of the story. We at the CVB staff, both and board, believe in helping in any way possible and extending resources to attract the leisure and hospitality traveler in creating a culture of expansion of the Fannie County through the improvement of the visitor experience. We are constantly trying to increase the services we provide to the public and also create a community of the future, promoting things like new shopping eateries, venues and such, and such as the new sports complexes coming up in the future, and things such as branding our community through marketing to the rest of the world. We currently print our visitors guide in-house and have sent over 5,000 of those out in the last six months. 2023 found us hosting great national events such as a great race, an antique vehicle race, and the motorcycle cannonball, also another antique motorcycle cross-country race. Subsequently, we were named best host city. Staff continued to stay busy in partnerships with annual events like Bee Vampire Days, Tumbleweed, and many others, hosting a multitude of events such as back-to-back events, creating huge economic impact such as the NJCAA National Ladies Division One Championship and the Garden City Charity Classic, now known as the Dream First Paint Charity Classic. Marketing for the Convention and Visitors Bureau has also changed dramatically as we're able to follow our visitors once in our community. This helps us create a better product moving forward for the leisure and hospitality spender. We're also working regionally to expand our presence and the presence of Southwest Kansas through our coalition's Tri-Southwest Kansas and Wild West Country, our regional association. So in closing, as you know, the CVB is a very important part of the continued growth of Fannie County, and we look forward to continuing and to extend our welcoming hand to those visiting our area and recruiting new leisure and hospitality visitors, events, meetings, and conferences.
Has your board considered raising the rate from $6? Statute authorizes up to $8, I believe?
That's not a decision that we make. That is 100% on you gentlemen.
I understand, but I don't think anybody up here would do that without a recommendation from the board.
Right at the moment, that has not been a conversation. Because of the downfall that we had in 2020, as you know, tourism basically ceased to exist during that time. However, in Fannie County, we did rather well in comparison to the other communities. We are still suffering some losses, and where we're at currently, my hoteliers are seeing recouping some of those dollars. Raising the transient tax on some of those folks would be kind of tough because of the proportion of the monies that they get.
From my perspective on this side, is to ask your board to consider it and make sure that next year we have a recommendation, because I don't think we would do anything without planned growth or planned opportunity, but it is an area that would help offset the increased costs of CVB.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Roxanne, what's your room count compared, is it, you've got several out of commission looks?
I have 990 rooms as compared to, a few years ago, I had 1199. We'll see some of that return and some of that will not.
On these ones that they've turned into longer term, like...
Mm-hmm, into, what are they called?
You don't get any revenue off of those, do you?
No, because at that point, they're no longer lodging facilities.
Yeah, the one that Randy bought and came out was one that came off the books and Continental and came...
Randy's facility is on the books. 717 is on the facility.
I thought, I thought...
I'm sorry?
You were, were at 11...
1199, almost 1,200 rooms, yes, sir.
Now you're down to 1,100.
I'm down to 990.
900, okay. I hear from people that tell me, they say, well, you know, during the week, we have a hard time booking rooms.
On the weekend, you have a hard time booking rooms as well, yes, sir. Good problem to have.
All right, but if the demand's that high, then the revenue can support an increase and alleviate the need for any other tax dollars to help operate CVB and all the things that you do. But I would want your board to be in the position of making that first recommendation to us, rather than us unilaterally telling CVB what they should be doing as far as budgeting and revenue.
One more question. Do you get a, when you invest your idle funds, do you help work with the treasurer to do that, or do you have a separate financial person that does those things?
We do that as a board. The conversations are, we try to make sure that we're investing as much of those funds as possible. You'll see over the last few years, the most we've invested into a CD is generally, and we're very limited on what we can make an investment in to make those funds work harder for us, is we generally put back about 25,000.
I just wondered if you could pool funds with the treasurer and make, get a greater return, I don't know.
I will be happy to have that conversation with her, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And to that point, I know from previous experience, they have limitations on what they can invest in, but having that conversation, I think, is prudent, no problem about that. I know when I was liaison to your board, you provided at board meetings what the percentage was... I know when I was liaison to your board, you provided at board meetings what the percentage was. I think you went as far as Great Bend and Hays and so.
Correct, and I will go into that. Yeah.
Oh, you're going to do that in your report? Okay. And, and because it seemed like the 6% was kind of in the middle, if you will.
It is.
And would I be correct in assuming that it also is kind of in the middle statewide? Or, because I know as I go out to different places, I'm seeing 7%, but I've also seen 5% and 6%.
Yes, in fact, when we're looking at, I can tell you the percentages of the five communities that we follow. Dodge City is at 8%. We are at 6%. Great Bend is at 6%. Hays just recently went up to 7%, and Liberal is at 6%. So we are right there in the middle of that. I believe the highest in the state is Overland Park at 10%.
Yeah, I know theirs is 10, yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments, sir?
I have a comment. You, what you stated about funding their, the Convention and Visitors Agency made it sound like you think maybe something other than transient guest tax has gone to their, to their budget. And that's not my experience. She pointed out as she opened her remarks where the money comes from, and it's from the guests, the heads and beds taxes, we used to call it. And it can only be spent for certain things, but if you don't get.
The regeneration of the tax is what funds us. If there is no tourism, there are no heads and beds, there is no money for us to do anything, right?
But her request this year's budget, 950,000, if they don't produce 950,000, so be it. She just don't have it to spend.
Correct. We are on what I like to call the rolling budget. As Dwayne and Lon both know, they've sat on our board as a liaison. We go over that budget regularly every 30 days. What do those percentages look like? What does it look like moving forward? What do the elections look like? What, what is the future? We're constantly monitoring that and trying to be financially responsible so that not only are we producing the best product, that we are running the best business that we possibly can and being financially responsible, those tax dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take their budget under advisement. Second?
Seconded to take this budget, CVB, under advisement. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm back.
You're back. This time for?
An update, a quarterly update. Actually, it'll be kind of two quarterly updates. I'm going to update you on the last quarter of last year, transient tax-wise, because that is the revenues we got first quarter of this year. But what's going on currently this quarter? We are working a multitude of different events that are coming in. We have secured in JCAA Division One National Golf Championship again, and we are working with, they are going with a new housing company, so we are currently working with that. We've worked with Manny Ortiz on getting UAAA, true, Triple S, I always mess this one, Triple S A softball. That is a first for us. We haven't had women's softball in our community before, so we'll be working diligently with Manny on that. Melissa has reached out to Natoa Begay. That's a golf group that carries quite a little bit of credibility. Steph hasn't been out the entirety of the first quarter. It seems like we haven't been in office. We have been to Portland, Oregon. We have been, excuse me, Oklahoma City. We have been to Dallas, Fort Worth. We have been all over the United States lately, recruiting and getting events and/or marketing groups to come to our community. This time of the year, we're also doing a lot of legislative lobbying. We were at Destination State House, as we saw many of you there as well. We just finished up KCAC. We host both the men's and the women's national champion, or state championship for that. The women's has never been held anywhere but here until last year, when there was a conflict with the Charity Classic, and they moved away. We're very happy to be back home. Obviously, events like Rocky Welton are always on our schedule first quarter. We did change our cell phone tracking company from Datafy to Placer AI just because of the quality of services are, and the information we're getting back are more diligent and better presented to us. Let's see. We also laid in some new things for the hub. The hub is our visitors guide that we print in-house. Holly works diligently on that to make sure that there's a lot of history in that, not only in that, but that all of the information of things that are going on and location of services are correct. We also with the state travel guide, and we are working on a three-year marketing campaign with a national group that will roll up probably first part of next year. So that's taken a little bit of our time, so we're excited about that. Transient tax-wise, we ended up last quarter, which was our October, November, December quarter for, and again, like I said, it's a little confusing with us because we receive our checks every quarter, and we won't receive this quarter until January, so this started our year. That check was 258,490 dollars and 39 cents. We did not receive all of that because there is a percentage that is taken out for the repayment of the water park and the Starbond dollars. But we had a real, we ended on a very good note. That quarter was up 1.27% over the 2022 previous quarter. I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but we ended the year, I believe, over 927,000 dollars in revenue. So it was an exciting year for us, and we were ecstatic because of the fact of we're coming from 2020, and we're already beating those 2019 numbers. So, yeah, our industry took a really, really big hit, along with everybody else in 2020. And I would stand for any questions that you guys might have.
Anything else for Roxanne?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't remember now if it was a year ago or two years ago when the statewide, the tourism was moved into Department of Commerce.
Yes, two years ago.
Help us understand a little bit about that relationship, what it's brought to the tourism group and, and how that's working. I know you were excited about that taking place because you felt that was more.
That's, so we are generators of revenue in the community. We are commerce. Tourism business is quality of life business, and it was exciting because we came from Parks and Rec, which tourism is Parks and Rec, but it's not the revenue side of it, and that's what we're concentrating on. Also, the ability to partner with that and the synergies that there is with economic development at the state level is fantastic. And so our budget increased, so we're, the availability to do more at the state level increased. And not only that, but I don't know if you guys know this, as a state, we rank like 48th on what we spend in tourism dollars to market our communities in our state. I think that increased. I don't have the exact numbers at this point, but I know that that increased. And I know that there are a lot of grants. Buffalo Dunes received a grant for $40,000 to update restrooms out at the golf course. So there are some fundings that are coming back to us that haven't had, we haven't had the opportunity and would not have the opportunity with Parks and Rec. So it's been a very, very good partnership.
Glad to hear that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion with, no, we don't have any motions. All right. We appreciate the quarterly update of Roxanne and look forward to you being back in August.
Thank you.
All right. The next up is to the HRR, acronym that Jerry doesn't understand, project agreement. So please announce and tell us what we're doing.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. This morning, you are asked to approve and sign the project agreement for the 2025 High-Risk Rural Road Project, also referenced as the HRR project. The High-Risk Rural Road program is part of the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is administered by the Kansas Department of Transportation. The program allows federal funds to be used to pay 90% of the total cost of construction and construction engineering for projects intended to improve safety of rural roads. In March 2023, Fannie County Public Works received notification that our project had been selected for fiscal year 2025. This project includes the following improvements to Main Street from Taylor Avenue, which would be the city limits, to VFW, West to VFW Road. And that would be the addition of two-foot paved shoulders with a rock edge, the addition of retro reflective pavement markings to the existing paved road, and to mark or remove hazards adjacent to the roadway. So during this project, we also plan to do a mill overlay of Maple Street. So the alternatives before you today are the board may approve and sign the project agreement. The board may not sign and approve the project agreement. And staff recommends alternative one, which is to have the board sign and approve the project agreement.
We have a lot of mailboxes and other items up next to the road.
Yes.
Two-foot shoulders, going to require those to be moved?
Yes, and we're actually going through the same thing on VFW Road right now. So for 2024's HRR project, it was VFW Road, so this kind of goes hand in hand with that truck route. And so for VFW Road, we're doing the same thing. There's going to be mailboxes that are going to need to be moved.
And I would like to see that Maple is not a truck route at some point in time. Right now, we got a bridge out, but it seems that there's too much truck traffic on it, in my opinion. So the HRR grant that we're looking at really is for us to be responsible to estimate 113,000 to be paid out of the road and bridge budget. Is that, Mr. Administrator, current cost or is that from capital reserve?
This one here, I believe, is from the operating cost, if I remember correctly. Yes. Current budget.
And your opinions are adequate in safeguard funds for the expenditure of the 113,000?
Yes, sir.
Questions for Mackenzie with regard to the realization of this HRR grant, the two-foot paved shoulders, marking or removing hazards or obstructions adjacent to the roadway? We're going to have some unhappy landowners.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Mackenzie, down there at the intersection of Maple and VFW, request you would look at that and put any yield on one of them and not full stop?
Okay.
I know we've, I've talked about that in the past. It's not real handy for the people making that corner. You're slowed, you have slowed down anyway, but to come to a complete stop and then go is, it seems like you could put a yield sign in on one of them.
No, you're fine.
Kenneth Jones, Public Works, Road and Bridge Coordinator. In order to change that stop sign, we'll have to do a traffic study and everything before we can change that.
Well, you're studying now or doing something with a whatever this.
Yes, yes.
Maybe this would be the time to ask him to look at this.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other comments or questions? All right, is there a motion then to follow the staff recommendation of alternative number one, approve and sign the project agreement? And who is signing? The administrator or the chairman?
It looked like three commissioners.
Chairman, yeah.
Yeah.
All the commissioners.
Yes.
Since it's a state grant, probably all of us. All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. And, well, before I second, do we need to include the 113,000 dollars in the, we paid from Road and Bridge budget?
The motion includes the fiscal and policy impact. Is that correct, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And is your second concurred?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Our next item on the agenda is to hear from the county clerk with regard to expenses. And prior to your presentation, Madam Clerk, if I've done the math correctly, this worked out to $46 a vote?
That is correct.
Well, is there any way that we could maybe pass along the word to our representatives in Topeka that we don't need another presidential preference primary?
Feel free to pass that along.
Well, do we have the chief election officer's concurrence?
Yes, it is a lot of expense and time.
Proceed, please.
Yes, so today we're asking the board to consider certification of election expenses for the March 19th, 2024 presidential election. So not later than 60 days following such election, the Board of County Commissioners of each county shall certify to the Secretary of State the amount of all necessary and direct expenses incurred by the county for conducting said election. I have included the KARS, the Kansas Administrative Regulations, that provide for the apportionment of election expenses, both direct and indirect. Based on those regulations, staff has detailed and tracked what they deem to be reimbursable expenses, totaling $41,021.94. Following the submission of your certification of these expenses, the Secretary of State will further consider the validity and appropriateness of each of those expenses before approving payment to the county. So I did provide you with a summary of expenses and the actual invoices. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions for the clerk?
Statewide, is this pretty common? I mean.
The turnout?
The, you know, the cost.
I'm not sure that.
It'd be interesting to see what.
Definitely.
statewide voting cost is.
It seems to me that 105 counties, and even if you have 50% of them that are half as much, we spent three to four million dollars, because you know the larger counties have to beat 10 times our cost.
Yeah, and there was similar turnout across the state, so it was a lot of work in a lot of counties for a very small turnout.
I don't know that I can add an asterisk to my state income tax check, but I feel like we should have on this one. But we'll let the legislators know. We've got upcoming coffee where we can get firsthand and get the handshake as well as some really important other matters. Dory, with regard to this election, went without the incident, and you're confident in the results?
Yes, sir. And today I would ask, related to this certification, that you certify the amount of all those necessary and direct expenses incurred by Fannie County in the conduction of the 24 presidential preference primary, totaling $41,021.94.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to certify the amount of all necessary direct expenses incurred by Fannie County in conducting the 2024 Presidential Preference Primary Election, the amount of $41,021.94. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The expenses are certified and direct you to submit those to the state.
Thank you.
Last thing on the agenda is something that I placed there. I'd like to have a discussion with both clerk and the administrator on the issue of looking at a broker capabilities review for our property and casualty insurance. Right now, we have one local entity that does that, and I'd like to explore multiple options to have more than one bid. We just went through three different construction managers at risk for a $13 million project. Our property casualty insurance is around 500,000. It's not peanuts. And that's the reason for my request of asking for a motion that we do a broker capabilities review and ask the administrator and the clerk to direct that review. And we have a short order to get that done as we renew July 1st, I believe.
That's correct.
That's my request to the commission. If someone is so inclined, I would appreciate it.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you'd classify that as local agency anymore.
Well, they're stationed out of Salina, right?
Wichita's our home base now.
Well, they moved from Salina to Wichita.
They have a presence in Salina, but the, the main people are in Wichita now.
We do have a local presence. Our account manager is here and visits often.
There's no question about that.
Right. So that's, go ahead.
But do you have anything else?
No, I just, I think it's a good idea to look.
Well, and I'm not against looking, bidding, those kind of things. My question is this, how does this fit into our purchasing policy and our bidding policy versus other things that we go out to bid for? Is this, does this fall within those parameters within our policies?
To in essence go out for proposals, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, right, right.
And periodically, you should do that anyway.
Yeah.
For all your professional services.
Yeah, I just wondered if we didn't do this, if we would be in violation of our own policies or not.
No, it does not stipulate within your policies when to do it. It is a suggestion to be doing, looking at this every three to five years. Anyway, just to, and I know that last year during the budgeting process, there was a, some comments about the increases for property and casualty.
And my follow-up question, wasn't last year the year that we split out work comp?
Two years ago.
That would have been in '21, correct?
Was that two years ago? Okay, because we did have that discussion and split out the work comp from the PNC.
And we did, I think we went out that same year for property and casualty or begin that process.
That was when we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Wasn't that when we switched from EMC over to?
K- Work.
K- Work.
No, we went from Travelers for work comp to K- Work. It was prior to that that we moved from EMC to Travelers.
Okay.
All right, well, the motion that I seek is to ask that administrator and clerk do a broker capabilities review for our property and casualty insurance in going forward with making budget recommendations at that time.
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. I'm not against that motion, but to make sure that we don't exclude some opportunities, that, does that include associations? When you say broker capabilities?
They can open up to anybody they want. I want to explore who's else out there for broker capabilities for us, making recommendations.
Yeah, I was just trying to get an explanation of the broker language because I don't want to exclude some association possibilities as well.
So broker capabilities as opposed to getting bids or?
Correct, it's not a getting bids. It's a broker capabilities review of people wanting to act as our insurance broker.
Yeah, okay.
On property and casualty. It's very limited because we already have IMA on our benefits. And it's pretty late in the year to want to be making any changes for that for budgeting purposes and for the employees. So, and it seems that work comp is working with K- Works. Well, we'll see what the numbers are when we get to budgeting, but I don't expect to have a large increase from them. We just haven't had many injuries, which is good news, by the way. And kudos to the administration and all your department heads and electeds to make that happen. Does my suggestion fail for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. And your motion is, is to direct the administrator and clerk to open up for broker capabilities review for Fannie County. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I'm going to nay.
I'm going to abstain. Motion passes. With regard to our items on our agenda, we move to the county administrator's report. You have the floor, sir.
You do have the report from the fire department if you want to...
Oh, well, if you defer to him, that'd be great. Let's hear from the fire department on monthly incident report, please.
No, you're good. Good morning, Kenny Smith, Garden City Fire Department. This monthly report is for March. If you look at the pie graph, it shows the majority of the calls that were responded to were rescue slash EMS calls. Throughout those calls, there was nothing bad, nothing horrific. So it was just accidents or EMS assists as far as like lift assists or something like that out in the county to assist EMS. Moving on to fires, 21% of the month, about nine fires. Again, nothing major, simple ditch fires, grass fires and something like that, but nothing major as far as needing anything bad. Somebody did mention the Kearney County fire. We did send a brush truck and a command element to assist Kearney County over there just to help them out, just so you guys know that. Other than that, the other calls, false calls, good intent calls, canceled en route, something like that. Not really a heavy month, good, which is good. And then, as far as like the percentages or number of calls in your prospective townships, Garden City Township, naturally the most with 28, and then Sherlock with 10, and then thereafter. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Questions for the... Kenny, when you have a call to a township or how, when you bill a township, you just have to arrive upon the scene to be able to bill them? Or do you have to actually participate in the?
If we get called to that township, they are billed. And it's at the end of the year when that bill is out.
Other questions on the monthly report? Yes, sir.
Kenny, and I'm looking at the page in our package, page 203, but where you talk about the number of calls to each of those townships.
Mm-hmm.
For the, again, for those viewing and here in the room watching, can you explain just quickly where those townships are, like northeast part of the county?
Ooh, without a map, I am. I know Garden City Township is pretty much like in the middle. And then Sherlock naturally is Holcombe. Garfield is in the Panhandle of the county. Ivanhoe, I believe, is in the northeast, no, southeast, okay? And then Terry Township is northeast.
And I was mainly wanting people to understand where those two largest calls.
And we are missing Pierceville and Playmell Townships.
But, but there weren't any calls to those townships evidently.
There are a total of seven.
Right, there's another two. I do appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Kenny. Didn't put you on the spot.
No, you're good.
Just wanted people to understand what areas are...
Commissioner, you might want to ask the elections officer where the townships are.
Well, I could, I could, but Kenny was at the podium.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Good, good point, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner? Thank you. Deferring to development. Thank you. We'll hear again from the development coordinator.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I have a few updates for you this morning on our developments. The first is Country Acres. Last week, they did finish pouring the concrete inlets into the drainage detention pond. And they've finished seeding all of the ditches. So we'll see how well that, the seed takes hold over there. So what they're waiting on right now is they're going to be working on the signage. They're responsible for installing all of the initial signage. So they are working on that now. And we did receive, or Neighborhood and Development Services did receive at least one building permit for one of the lots out there. So they want to get started here pretty quickly. And then for the RHID, I am just waiting still on cost estimates. I talked to the developer last week, and he will be trying to get those to me early this week. So moving on to Randall Estates, they're still working on dirt work, on constructing the roads and the detention ponds and the ditches. So that's all I have for you this morning.
Any questions, McKenzie, with regard to development? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The treasurer is here or not here? We received the idle funds report.
She is, she is out of the office today. But she can come back next meeting if you have questions or would be happy to take...
Do any commissioners have any questions with regard to her submitted report? I think it looks very good. I'm very happy with continued revenue and investment, the bidding process, the allocation of funds. If commissioners have any concerns, we'll ask the treasurer to come back. All right, very good. Then we'll move on down the agenda to the administrator's report then.
All right. Last week, we went through, spent a couple of days with the architects on the Health Department EMS facility. And also went through the construction manager risk process as you acted on today, as well as had various meetings on the 25 budget coming up. Continue to do that this week as well. Had a discussion with Bond Council. Bond Council will be here next week to talk to you a little bit about potential funding mechanisms for the Health Department EMS facility and the LEC building. We do have, from Alan Richardson, a request to meet the first couple of days in June to do interviews on that, on his process for the LEC building. So I'll send out today invitations and timeline to, for that process. He'll interview, obviously, each one of the commissioners and various stakeholders within the facilities and so forth, and we'll move that project forward. So we'll get that sent out later on.
Anything else, sir?
That is it for me this week.
Questions for the administrator? If not, Commissioner Fishney, what time is your departure date this week?
Oh, I've got about 30 minutes.
Okay. I'm going to take things a little bit out of the order because we have an executive session planned, and there may not be time after yet in order to get your commissioners' report. So would you give the public your commissioners' report at this time?
My report is, there's been several local meetings and so forth that I've participated in, including a legislative coffee, which I believe may have been the last one. I'm not sure. They have, well, they have one scheduled, but they were saying at that, at that coffee that it might be the last one. So I don't know if that one in May will, will happen or not.
You have to use a different voice tone. The bird's trying to get in.
I know. I'm trying, I'm trying to use the deeper tone so that they, you know, distract.
We're saving electricity. Sorry for the...
I won't say what Larry told me earlier, but, so anyhow, I... The meetings of note that I've been to that are of interest to all of you is, one is the Kansas County Commissioner Association meeting moves around the state each, each year. And this year was in Pittsburgh. And there were several things at that meeting that I think are noteworthy. I don't know that I'll go through all of them right now, but there were subjects about community engagement and the hands-on ethics of A1, of the artificial intelligence and so forth, and some other subjects at that conference. But I think two things that I would like to note is, first of all, at the pre-conference budgeting session, it was presented by our own administrator and assistant administrator, a day-long session on budgeting. And I don't know how they felt as presenters, but as someone sitting in the audience, it was interesting for me to watch how many notes were taken, being taken, how many people were really paying attention to what was being said, the questions that were being asked, I thought were very pertinent and so forth. And so I, I hope that Robert and Jenny felt that it was worthwhile for them to do that presentation because I felt the audience of 30, 35-something participants really benefited from that. And Robert can speak to that more if he wants. But on the artificial intelligence, that was one of the subjects that really caught my attention. I'm not an AI person, if you will, in general, because I believe we sometimes take away the human element. And to me, I'm, I want to be across from that person, be able to talk to him. However, using AI, whether it be in healthcare or other places, I think it can be of assistance to humans. And that's what I picked up with regard to this conference. And so I would encourage us as a county administration and as a county organization to really dig into the AI subject more because they talked about it could be used for tasks, especially in human resources with regard to job descriptions. It could be used as social media, minutes, agendas, so forth. And we may be, you know, we may be using some of this now. And if we are, I applaud that. But there were so many different ways that it could be used. And one of those ways that Lynn County talked about was a nuisance abatement policy that was generated by AI. And we've talked so many times about code enforcement and so forth here within Fannie County that I think talking to Lynn County and how did you do that and so forth makes a lot of sense. They also talked about how it addressed wind turbine and solar policies through use of AI information. So the Kansas Office of Technology is one of the sources that we can use for that. But that was one of the breakout sessions that I got the most benefit from. And it really helped me realize how AI can assist us, not necessarily replace us. And that's always been my concern about replacement of the human element. The other thing that I attended a week or so ago was in Salina, the Kansas Infrastructure Summit. And I get as much out of some of these summits by the networking with, for example, I was with Marty Long, who's a commissioner, but now running for state legislature again. Some of that networking, I think, is just as beneficial as the presentations. But the point that I picked up there, and I have mentioned just in passing to Robert, is there's so many grants and loans for rural water and those kinds of things that I think we need to really pay attention to. This BIL funding, I can't remember what that acronym stands for now, but there's funds available. But the other is through the BIL agency in Topeka, which is part of KDOT, there's grant writing assistance and so forth that wasn't there before. They've hired a BIL executive director who has grant writing experience. And so I would encourage staff and the county to really dig into some of those kinds of things as well. So those were the two main conferences that I've attended recently. If people have more questions about them, I've got information from both. But I'll leave it with that. Right, well, and then lastly, and then I've been involved in, in the Health EMS Subcommittee, the Law Enforcement Committee, and which have been time-consuming, but been very educational and beneficial for Fannie County going forward.
Sometimes our folks don't blow their horn very well, but at the meeting in Pittsburgh was the county commissioners' meeting statewide. And two of the speakers at that meeting were, you know, would you comment on the job that they did in helping address finance issues across Kansas for committee?
Well, I hate to say too much because I don't think it's evaluation time yet. No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just kidding. They did a, they did an outstanding job and made it understandable. Robert definitely was planning questions around the room the entire time. And Jenny was the Vanna White of the whole deal with the slides and so forth and did, did great. But she also had a couple of pieces where she admits that she was out of her comfort zone just a little bit, but you couldn't tell it in her presentation. But both of them created some interaction and good discussion within that session. And I would give them each high marks about that presentation. I would give them each high marks about that presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate that report.
And, and then lastly.
Well, you're way over your five minutes.
No, no, this is to your question, this is to your question.
All right.
And lastly, they both behaved themselves at the reception, somebody really made a hot mic here for me, they both behaved themselves well at the reception, so, yeah.
And the person in the mirror?
They would have to pass on that judgment.
All right, very good. I'm confident that we put our best foot forward for our community. Want to thank the Administrator and Assistant Administrator and Chief Financial Officer for their participation in this statewide meeting in Pittsburgh. With that, we get back to the County Counselor's report on the agenda, and after you give your report, we'll hear about a need for an executive session.
What about the Administrator, is the Administrator going to report?
Administrator finished his report while you were gearing up for your presentation.
He did?
That was five minutes and 55 seconds.
I thought he was going to give a critique too, but.
Actually, I failed to start the clock for a full minute, so it was.
Significantly over the allotted time once again.
I appreciate your indulgence.
Madam Counselor, please take the floor soon.
I, I will try to keep my comments short. April 22nd, the letters went out regarding the tax sale to those who are delinquent at this point in time. Had a number of them that actually came back as undeliverable, so if you haven't been paying your taxes and you didn't get a letter, then perhaps we don't have an updated address for them. Had one come back as being delivered and indicated that we didn't have the ability to tax her, and this was an illegal sale, but still moving forward with everything with that. We do have it on the agenda for the executive session to talk about some attorney-client privilege matters.
All right, anything else for the County Counselor, questions? Continue the hard work on the share, on the tax sale, and despite the one citizen's opinion, we're going to proceed.
Yeah, we did have three more that actually paid after the tax sale letters went out, which was a total of $11,068.95. So we had at least a little success after the letters went out of getting some payments.
Hate the postage.
There you go.
All right, how long do we need for an executive session and persons and participants?
The Administrator, the Assistant Administrator, and myself, as well as the Board, probably 30 minutes.
We can always come back early.
No. We, we, we can make it for less and you can come back in and re.
And go for more.
And go for more, so whichever way it is that you want to do it.
Say that backwards. All right. Thanks for the corrections, everybody. Let's just do 20 minutes, and need a motion to go into executive session as outlined by the Counselor.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be out in 20 minutes. We'll be out in 20 minutes. Entertain a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go back into regular session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. I will note for the record that no action was taken during the executive session. It's come to the commission's attention through council that this commission has not received a response from the city of Garden City to the proposed interlocal agreement between the city and the county that was promulgated by our staff during June and July of last year. What we're going to commonly refer to as the red line of the interlocal, existing interlocal agreement, and that on the advice of council that we should appoint a committee to meet with so established committee by the city if they are so inclined to continue with negotiations on the interlocal agreement. The composition of the committee would be chairman and the vice chairman of this commission, along with three designated staff persons at the designation and determination of the county administrator. And we want to continue to work with the city in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration to be efficient with the tax dollars and be responsive to each entity's constituency. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer that motion, but I would add that we ask the city to have a equal number of five, including two of their commissioners and whatever staff they feel, they deem appropriate, so that it would be a total committee of 10 with two commissioners from each body. And that would be the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to create a committee for consultation with the city and work, hammer out the interlocal agreement between the city and Fannie County as discussed during the presentation here following our executive session. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. And with the consent of this commission, I will call Mayor Ortiz and ask the administrator to also advise Mr. Allen, the city administrator of our action today, to continue to work and get this agreement done for the benefit of everyone.
That's on Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Pishney is, has to leave. We will continue with the remaining commissioner reports going from right to left. Commissioner Jones?
The only activity I really had was legislative activity with KLPG. It was quite interesting to understand that the legislature passed a unanimous House version of tax relief bill to all taxpayers, and the Senate also passed it, but it was vetoed by the governor. And then it overrode, or they failed to override the governor's veto by one vote. All the western Kansas senators, except one, voted on the over, affirmative on the override. So I will let you all do the research on the one senator that did not vote for the override.
Correct. All right. We'll go right here to my left. Commissioner Dries, your report.
We had our monthly Great Plains meeting. Some loan, or applications were reviewed and other, that's just pretty much business as normal for monthly meeting for Great Plains. Most of the time was spent on the EMS Health Department building. As we previously talked, there's one point I might add. We probably on our fourth, maybe in our fifth overhaul of the floor plan, EMS and Health Department are keep coming up with different ideas how they want their floor plan to be. And it's been interesting watching those, that process work out. And that, that's it.
You said something about a fifth?
I think we're in the fifth, fifth draft of it.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I don't have much to report. Had a, went to legislative coffee and had a library board meeting, but I'm going to give an accolade. This book that I'm going to assume Jenny had something to do about, that front page is the most helpful thing I've found in all the budgeting. Because I looked at that, and gee, there's something that gets my attention. Now I can go to their budget. So Jenny, whoever's responsible.
Do I?
Do I? Whoever. Well, I'll give her a hug here when we get through with me. But I appreciate it. So good, good work.
All right. My report is, is that since I was fishing, I did not attend the Compass board meeting in April, but things, exciting things are happening at Compass, and we continue to be a supporting agency of Fannie County with the Compass area mental health, and I think we will continue in the future. We have some great news that will be published shortly about things going on in Fannie County and Garden City. And from the commission's chair, it's hopeful that we can continue to work closely with the city to be efficient and responsive at the same time with regard to our existing interlocal agreement and getting two commissions and two staffs together and get this thing hammered out. We haven't been able to get it done in 11 months. I think we're going to get it done in short order, in my opinion. Matt, does anybody have anything else?
The next meeting, we're going on here, June 6th, is that incorrect? That's Thursday? If I'm reading my calendar right.
We do not read our calendar right.
Well, on the published agenda today, it has May 20th and June 6th, so-
I see. Yeah, no. It should be June 3rd.
So meeting is June 3rd. I remember Commissioner Pishney will not be here on the 20th, so if one or more of you are going to be gone on the 20th, we need to know about it right away, or else we would not have a quorum. If more than one of you, we can go with three, we can't go with two. All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Hearing no comment. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.